The Wake Cross City Commission Meeting is now called to order. At this time, we will stand and prepare for our implication. One has been chosen. Commissioner Solomon Gaines, do you have someone that you have for prayer tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to be the prayer myself tonight.
Amen.
That's okay.
Everyone, please bow. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for allowing us to come together at least one more time. We pray, Lord, that you would bless the efforts that we make in ruling the city or controlling what happens in our city. Dear Father in heaven, I want to thank you for this journey of seventeen years that I've had with the city of Wake Cross. I pray, Lord, that those replacing me and Commissioner Three would have the wisdom, the courage, and the knowledge needed to help run this city. Dear Father in heaven, I thank you for the employees, Mr. Mayor, and the citizens of this city of Wake Cross. Thank you, Father, and please, Lord, allow us to make decisions that are pleasant to you and not to ourselves. These are all the blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our great citizens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have the reading of our decorum, followed by our executive duty of the employee of the district.
The mayor, commissioner, and staff and citizens in attendance shall conduct themselves in a professional and respectful manner. Except when specifically authorized by the mayor, all remarks, comments, and questions shall be directed to the mayor and not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. A commissioner, a commissioner, staff, or citizen in attendance shall not speak at a meeting until the commissioner, staff, or citizen in attendance has been recognized by the mayor and granted permission to speak or ask a question. All comments or questions made by commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance shall address the motion that is being discussed or pertinent to the agenda item before the commission. Any and all remarks, personal remarks, comments, or questions are inappropriate. The mayor shall enforce these rules of the quorum. If a commissioner believes that a rule has been broken, said commissioner can raise a point of order. A second is not required. The mayor can rule on the question, or the mayor can allow the commissioner to debate the issue and decide the issue by majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, Chief?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, we need to go to item B. A will not be done tonight. There's a family emergency, so that we will not be able to take that tonight.
With that statement, we'll move to item B, and this will be our appointment of Mr. Charlie Moore, filling the place of Mr. Philip Saucy on the Wake Cross Ware County Development Authority. What we will need here is, I believe at this point, do we need just a consensus, or do?
Yes.
So do we have consensus?
Do we need consensus, and do we need a vote?
We need a vote.
We need to vote on it then? Okay, we receive a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Mr. Charlie Moore to the WWDA board.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins that Mr. Charlie Moore will be the person who will serve on the WWDA board. Is there any discussion or any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just want, want to explain that this is the Wake Cross Ware County Development Authority, WWDA. A lot of people don't understand what that is. Thank you, sir, back to you.
Thank you. With having heard that, if there's no other comment or question, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. The appointment goes, and Mr. Charlie Moore is now part of the WWDA board. Our official reports. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, my comments will be short tonight. Santa, if the rain will let up, Santa will be out again tonight, and I think he has been able to, before Christmas, will be able to make all the streets in our city. It's been a chore, but he's been able to do it, and we're thankful for that. I also want to thank Commissioner Solomon Gaines and Commissioner Three for the job that they've done. I've been here May, I mean March, it'll be fourteen years, and as the fire chief, I'm speaking as the fire chief now. I want to thank them for their leadership role in public safety. We have a lot of things, and I reminded people in our department today that we have things because they sat on the board of the public safety and brought information back to the commissioners, and it was that leadership, I believe, that helped. It was the body as the whole that made things happen, but they were the eyes and ears for the board and yourself to bring that information back, and as the fire chief, I thank you for that. We're a lot better off today than we were fourteen years ago, and it's because of this body and their leadership. And finally, I want to say a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone here tonight and to all of our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. As a public service announcement, we do want to say happy birthday to our city attorney, whose birthday was earlier, I believe, in the month. And so, we appreciate you and thank you for your service. We do thank Commissioner Solomon Gaines and Commissioner Three for their work and their service, and that's an untireless work, sometimes picking up phones and going into neighborhoods without getting sometimes the responses that would be normally given for the work that has been done. And certainly, we are grateful to each of you tonight for being here, and we do concur with Chief and with the City Manager by saying happy, 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 happy days are coming, and we say Merry Christmas to you. At this time, we'll move into public remarks on official action. Do we have any tonight?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll move to the consent calendar, and we'll hear those words concerning.
Okay. Consent calendar, approval of minutes. City of Wake Cross City Commission Meeting Tuesday, December 7, 2021, 5:00 p.m. Continued Wake Cross City Commission Meeting Thursday, December 7, 2021, 4:30 p.m. Ordinances and Second Readings. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to amend Chapter 2, Administrative, Article 4, Officers and Employees, Section 2-191, Oath of City Clerk, Subsection D, relating to absence of city clerk and finance director to repel conflicting ordinances, to provide for separability, to provide for effective date, to provide for codification, to provide for renumbering or relettering, and for other purposes. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to amend Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 113, Subdivision, Section 113-229, Street and Alley Improvements, to make corrections and deletions by removing Subsection D in conformity with city's Stormwater Utilities and Code of Ordinance Sections 105-55 through 106-67, to provide for codification, to provide for renumbering or relettering, to provide for separability, to repel conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to amend Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 105, Environmental Control, Article 2, Storm Control, Section 105-23, Drainage Requirements, Section 105-25, Design Standards, to make additional corrections in conformity with the city's Stormwater Utilities Code of Ordinance Section 105-55 through 105-67, to provide for codification, to provide for renumbering or relettering, to provide for separability, to repel conflicting ordinances, to provide for an effective date, and for other purposes. An ordinance to amend the code, to amend the code of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia, to amend Chapter 105, Environmental Control, Article 4, Stormwater Utilities, Sections 105-56, 105-58, 105-59, 105-60, and 105-66, to make certain revisions, corrections, additions, and deletions, to provide for codification, to provide renumbering or relettering, to provide for separability, to repel conflicted ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we do the privilege license separately? Mr. Attorney, can we?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, is that okay we do that? I want to give her a breath. She's catching breath.
Okay, very good. Well, with that being said, we can, we need a motion to go ahead and do that?
Yes, excuse me, to, to, on the ordinances or there's a separate, the separation?
Just to separate it, just on the separation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going, we separate the privilege license renewal from the ordinances?
Thank you.
Second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second by our Commissioner Hopkins that we separate the two portions of our consent calendar, the ordinances and second readings, from the privilege license renewals. With that being said, is there any discussion on this, Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Give her a little bit of breath, and we'll go ahead and vote on this one. Now, we're going to go back for a motion regarding the ordinances of second readings. Is there a motion to receive them?
Mr. Mayor, and also the consent calendar with the?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the consent calendar and the ordinance for the second readings as listed.
I second it, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any correction? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Second reading's passed. At this time, we're here, our privilege license renewals.
Privilege license renewal. The five events, Rush Patel, 215 Knight Avenue, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Consumption on Premises Beer, Wine, and Liquor. Tipsy Inc., Doing Business as Tipsy's Patel, 1711, Ossie Davis Parkway, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sales Beer, Wine, and Liquor. Kroger Company, Kimberly Briefman, 1606 Memorial Drive, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sales Beer and Wine. Foo, Lion Jesse Lee, 1312 Plant Avenue, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sale Beer and Wine. Aiden Mini Mark, Kiara Barton, 2198 Brunel Street, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31503, Package Sales Beer and Wine. Ty Smiles, Posh Yukron, 314 Piddleton Street, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Consumption on Premises Beer and Wine. Dollar General, Sidney Norton, 1803 Knight Avenue, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sales Beer and Wine. Q's Company, John Edwards, 670 Oak Street, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sale Beer and Wine. Shree's Raw, 16 Inc., Raj Patel, 610 Memorial Drive, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sale Beer and Wine. Ruby Tuesdays, Rosa C. Smith, 2263 Memorial Drive, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Consumption on Premises Beer, Wine, and Liquor. Cottery, 1942 Inc., Sumire Patel, 507 South City Boulevard, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sale Beer and Wine. Wiley's Top Shelf LLC, Del Wiley Senior, 409 Alice Street, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Consumption on Premises Beer, Wine, and Liquor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second, first, a motion by Commissioner Hopkins and a second by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. At this time, is there any discussion on the privilege license renewals? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Privilege license renewals approved.
Privilege licenses. Raj Inc., Doing Business as Quick Mart, Raj Patel, 800, Ossie Davis Parkway, Wake Cross, Georgia, 31501, Package Sales Beer and Wine. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
We have a motion by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this privilege license? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Privilege license approved. At this time, we have bids. Ms. Linda Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, and City Manager. Our first item tonight is bid number FY22-14. At the direction of the City Commission, purchasing and issuing RPs for Realtor services and was issued to all of our area Realtors to sell certain designated city properties. We received three responses, and after staff review, it's our recommendation to contract with Gateway Realty as being the lowest commission submitted and also the best to middle. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Linda. We entertain a motion concerning this bid?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? We have a motion by our Commissioner Hopkins, a second by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Any discussion on this bid or any comments to the community? Hearing none, at this time, Commissioner Hopkins?
Just one second. Okay, so this Realtor company will be listing several pieces of property that the city has for sale.
Yes, ma'am, we have seven parcels that they will list for us.
Okay. Just wanted to be noted why we are using a Realtor, because these properties are valuable property, and the city is not in use of those right now. So selling them and getting them back on the tax roll will be the benefit for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll move into voting if there's no other discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ms. Linda?
Our next item is to, we're asking for you to approve the emergency purchase of some pipe for Alpha Street Drainage. That was 260 feet of 30-inch double-wall lined HDP pipe. There was a lot of issues in that area, the drainage there, and we needed to get some pipe here in a hurry. So this was purchased from Consolidated Pipe and Supply of Wake Cross, Georgia, for $11,706.60, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We entertain a motion for this emergency purchase.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Solomon Gaines, did you want to make any comments on this?
Yes, yes, sir. First of all, I'm so thankful that we found a getting for this, because there were a lot of issues, like she said, in that area. But also, can you explain why we're having to do an emergency and what happened that we had to do it, try to do it locally?
Yes, ma'am, actually, this started back in October that we were trying to get this pipe in, and let me see what date that was. The order was originally placed with Lanier Municipal Supply in Lakeland, Georgia. They were the lowest price that was submitted to us on this. They had said they could get the price, the pipe, to us the very next week. By November the first, we still did not have this pipe. They couldn't get it, they couldn't deliver it to Wake Cross. It was in Lakeland, Georgia, but could not get here. We didn't have the equipment to go and get it. They couldn't get drivers. So Consolidated Pipe and Supply of Wake Cross was a little higher, but we had to go ahead and buy it from them so they could get it here, and it was delivered within the next week for us once we placed the order with Consolidated.
Thank you very much, Jim. And I see Ms. Felder is in, is here with us. Make sure you follow up on that. That's on Alpha Street. So make sure we follow up on that. Make sure that, you know, the work is completed, because it was such... Did you want to say something, Mr. James?
Yes, ma'am.
It was such a mess over there. I mean, just a mess.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, the work has been done. This is just a follow-up so we can get approval to pay for the pipe and everything, but the work has been completed. What had happened was there was a void that come in the existing pipe. It was over, and it was unsafe for the residents in that area, so we had to do an emergency and get it taken care of.
Have we had, I'm sorry, have we had a rain, a big rain since then?
Yes, ma'am, all day today, and everything's working fine. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you. That you, Mr. Mayor, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we have a motion and a second and some discussion. At this time, if we're ready for voting, we'll move in. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. This bid approved.
Our next item is request for some surplus property, WAYX22-05. You have a list of items, well, there's one item on there tonight, that we are requesting that you declare surplus so that those can be, that item can be sold on govdeals.com. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Linda. We entertain a motion concerning this bid?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Henry Strickland and seconded by our Commissioners Hopkins and Solomon Gaines. Any discussion or comments regarding this surplus property? Any Commissioner? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bid approved. Ms. Linda?
Our next item tonight is bid number FY22-11. This is 913 G Street, 0.07 of an acre, and it's block 1, Lot 11, parcel map number WA0707043. This parcel was offered originally for sale in October with no bidders. We've reissued this property up for sale, and we've received one bid, and it's the staff's recommendation to award the sale of this property to Cultivating Lives Education Services for $100. This organization plans to put a community farm on this plot for youth in the area to cultivate. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Linda. We entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion or comments on this property? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Sale of property approved.
Our next item is bid number FY22-12. This is 0.6 of an acre on Clough Street. This was originally offered for sale in October also with no bidders, and that is block R, Lot 1, parcel number WA0603063. We've reissued this property for sale and received one bid, and it's the staff's recommendation to award the sale of this property to Cultivating Lives Education Services for $100. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Linda. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on the Clough Street property? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Property sold.
Our next item is bid number FY22-07. This is 0.4 of an acre on Martin Luther King Drive. This was block S, Lot 9, parcel number WA06030052. Again, this was also offered in October for sale, and there were no bidders on that. We've reissued this property, and we, it's our recommendation to award the sale of this property to Cultivating Lives Education Services for $100, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approved. Ms. Linda?
Our last item tonight is bid number FY22-15. This is also a 0.04 of an acre on Martin Luther King Drive, Block A, Lot Playat, number 22, and that is parcel number WA0713085A. This was also offered in October with no bidders. We've reissued that for sale again, and we received one bid, and it's our recommendation to award the sale of this property to Cultivating Lives Education Services for $100, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. We entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this real property? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Bid approved. Thank you, Ms. Linda. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions. A resolution to declare the results of the 2021 election and to declare those elected to commission posts for the commission of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia, District 1, District 2, and District 3, and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will certify and declare the results of the 2021 elections of the city of commissioner of District 1, Norman E. Davis, Sr., for city commissioner for District 2, Shanita S. Bennett-McCarley, and for city commissioner for District 3, Katrina Felder. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
It's a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia, to award emergency contracts to Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company, Inc., for the pipe to repair Alpha Street drainage issue to pay invoice and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve work done on an emergency basis to repair a drainage pipe problem on Alpha Street and ask a payment for an invoice to Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company in the amounts of $11,706.60 for the purchase of 260 feet of 30-inch high-density pipe. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia, to award contracts to Gateway Realty to market and sell certain designated city-owned properties and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve a contract with Gateway Realty to market and sell certain designated surplus properties in order to obtain the best price for sale. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Hopkins and a second from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia, to approve the sale and transfer of certain surplus real property and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve the sale and transfer for four small surplus properties on Clough Street, Martin Luther King Drive, and at 193 G Street for $100 each for Cultivating Lives Education Services, Inc. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by our Commissioner Hopkins and a second by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. That is nineteen thirteen G Street.
Nine thirteen. Is it nine thirteen or nineteen?
It's nineteen, it's nine thirteen, I'm sorry. Nine thirteen, she said nine oh three.
Thank you for the correction.
Just making a correction.
Thank you. With the correction being made in this amendment, we are going to go ahead and move into voting with the correction. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution approved. At this time, Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to approve additional holiday for the calendar year twenty twenty-one and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve an additional holiday calendar year for twenty twenty-one being New Year's Eve Day, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution concerning the holiday?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Solomon Gaines.
Can we ask our African City Manager to explain what we're doing and why we're doing this?
Commissioner, his request that the city manager speak to this.
Per our handbook, employee handbook, there are ten holidays that are passed and approved by the commission each year at the beginning of the year. With the New Year's falling on the Saturday this year, if we had that, it was not approved for December the thirty-first, to carry it over into twenty twenty-two would create more issues being that we would have work sessions and commission meeting on the third and the fourth, that Monday and Tuesday. So, we brought it to the commission to ask for permission to put that in there. So, we're not gaining anything, the employees are not. We're just trying to remedy a potential problem. And this corrects that for us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion or questions to be asked? If not, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution approved. Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to submit F Y twenty-two local maintenance and improvement grant application and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will authorize the submission of an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for an L-ME grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by our Commissioner Hopkins, a second by our Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to award contract to Travelers Insurance Company for the city's workers' compensation insurance needs and services for the calendar year twenty twenty-two and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve a contract with Travelers Insurance to provide workers' compensation insurance coverage to the city at the cost not to exceed three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and seven. For the calendar year twenty twenty-two. Three hundred and ninety thousand and seven dollars. Sorry about this, a lot of reading tonight.
You're doing good.
Thank you for the correction. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
We have a motion by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and a second by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Solomon Gaines.
When we left last night, we talked about this last night. There were some concerns or questions. Did we clarify what we had to, what we asked, what we wanted them to do?
Yes, ma'am. We, at the beginning, when they actually originally gave us the bid, it was at four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Our broker was negotiating down to three hundred and ninety thousand to be fully insured for the calendar year. So, we did get that discounted down.
You took care of that?
We took care of it. Yes.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Solomon Gaines, and thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion. Or did we have discussion? So, we've already had that portion. If you will, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have one guest, Mr. Tim Peacock. Please state your name and address, and remember you have five minutes to speak.
Excuse me. Tim Peacock, nine oh six Euclid Avenue, Mayor's Commissioners. First, I'd like to say Merry Christmas and all to everybody. Everybody else has already said that, but I just add to it. Want to say something to Marion and to John because it's a personal thing, I could use the Commissioners' title or whatever, but it's more of a personal thing. Thank you very much for what y'all brought. Glad you've been here as long as you have, Marion. Wish you the best, you know, in whatever else you decide to do. John, appreciate everything you've done and what you've done for these kids. And I hope we don't quit here. One thing I want to expand on what Marion said last week, or week before last at the meeting. Since we've got our Commissioners, our new Commissioners here for next time, it just seems like one of the most important things that we can do is have everybody here. Because it's just a part-time job to be here, but it's a full-time job outside this door. And being out and about amongst everybody, it's one of the main things that I hear is why some things missing? Why some people not here? Why can't we talk to some people? And things like that. I hope y'all make yourself available for anybody to talk to. Because it's so much easier just to go and talk straight to a Commissioner about a problem they have in their district than to come up here and complain and pitch a fit about it and everything. Because all you really gonna wind up doing is making somebody mad and you're not gonna get nothing accomplished in the deal. And it's very easy to say the wrong thing up here. I know. You know, but I'm gonna say what comes from my heart. And what comes from my heart is I love this town. I want to be part of it and I'm gonna be part of it, hopefully. And it is a major deal that everybody shows up and we all make a decision. It should be a consensus, just like the mayor says every time. Should be a consensus on what we do. That way, anytime something's brought up, you're up to speed on it. It's not something that you missed and you don't have a clue. Because we had a little problem with that a couple of weeks ago. Is we moved into something that nobody knew nothing about. And it had to be handled by another commission. So, the biggest thing we can do now is look forward to next year and hope that we don't have some of the turmoil that we've had this year. I know the COVID has caused us a lot of trouble. We want to get past that. We want to make things better. It's all about making this town better and making the people better and giving them better services. And it's, it just takes away from when that man over there puts something in that newspaper that is negative to this town. And it's his job to report the news. And we want him to report whatever he knows, but we want the good stuff ahead of the bad stuff. And it's a shame that we do have people that want to just focus on the negativity here in this town. And we need to get past that. We need to get us a new city manager, move on in that direction. I know that that's something that's gonna take time. But it's the key to what we've got going on up here. Is the person that's gonna sit in there. And we need the chief back taking care of his business. So, the biggest thing we can do is not let some people come up here and make demands of what we need to do in this town and stir up trouble. If you've got something to say, just come up here, speak your piece and throw it out there. And I hope the new Commissioners will take light of that and not let anybody come in and steamroll. Y'all have a great year.
Thank you. With that being said, we move into our last call. At this time, we'll hear from Commissioner John Threed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to start by saying Merry Christmas to everyone. And I just seen my uncle walk in. He's always from Broxton, he's also a city councilman over there. Appreciate you coming. I'd like to say I'd like to thank my constituents that had the confidence in me and voted me four years in. I know when I started, I had a platform, things I want to do for this city. Not just for my district, but for the city. And I took a look at that platform last night. And I've actually checked off on every last one of them. So, what I told them I was gonna do, I did that. I know we came into the city at that time, we were workers' comp. We talked about that last night, we was in bad shape last night. As working with these other Commissioners and the mayor and the city manager and Ms. Chana, Mr. Ed, and now Marissa, we got that down. We're doing great in that. We talked about retaining police officers. I don't know if you all remember, we were very short here in the city. Chief Tanner was speaking of trying to hire people, how was he gonna do that? As we looked around at different cities, we were the lowest paid officers as a city. And Waycross was big and some of these smaller cities was paying these officers. And I worked with Chief Tanner and came with Chief Costin saying, hey, this is how we're gonna retain officers is we need to give them some money. Not what they're worth, because they're worth way more than that putting their lives on the line every day. I mean, to put that badge on people, it's a different story. You all just see them in a uniform, but behind that, it's a lot of weight that they have to take home back and forth. Along with the fire department, Chief Addens, you know where we were with that. I know they said that they heard raises before here in the city and they never got it. We did that. We retained staff there with you also. And I appreciate the opportunities that I had to work with your staff and what we did for your staff. And also, when Mr. Wilton was here, public works are the least employees that's overlooked. I'm telling you, they're overlooked. Even though they beautify the city, they're out there in the heat, cold, snow, whatever. It doesn't take a day that they get out and they do anything that they're told to do, Mr. James, and I appreciate that. And we actually, we got a raise of them also. And hopefully, and they come in and these other Commissioners, they'll see to it that they can give them something else because they're worth more than that. And with the employees that work here in the city and the city hall, when I came in, our past mayor, C.C. McRae, told me, he says, John, what you need to do is go in and get some relationship with these staff. Get to know them. Ask them certain things about the family, how long they've been with the city, if the mayor, they got kids. What do they want to see the city do? What can you do for them other than you can't give them promotions or raises right off by yourself? I came in that door my first day and I went around each one of these offices and I gathered rapport with them. Asked them these same questions. Some people said I was here to try to fire people. That wasn't it, people. I was here trying to build a relationship with them, trying to figure out about raises. What we're lacking with the fire department, what we're lacking with the police department within the city hall. That's the only thing I was doing. Making sure we got that together because when you have the city employees and you supporting them and you show them that, that you care, that means a whole lot, people. And I appreciate the opportunity to work with all the directors and all the employees side by side. I know a lot of times I go to the water department and I go and tell you what I was doing. I wasn't gonna do this, but I'll tell you what I was doing. I talked with Ms. Nance a whole lot about different things. And I told her, I said, look, if you have elderly people there, they come here, they can't pay their water, they're behind, and they're the only ones in the house, let me know. We got their water bills paid. That's what we're supposed to do. My dad told me two things you need to take care of. He says, I don't care if you have fifty kids, you take care of all fifty. And then you take care of the adults, the old elderly people, because they need you, because they took care of you. And what happens is it goes around in a circle, people, because when you do these things, it comes back to you. And that's how I was trained. That's why I was doing certain things in and out of city hall. People thought I was doing all different things. No, that's what we're supposed to do. And now, we're not teaching our kids and get back to the kid thing. The splash pad is a good idea for the smaller kids, but we gotta teach these kids the right way. Get them off the streets, get them in there and sure, and raise them the right way. It's a different generation that's raising the kids. And we gotta focus on these kids here in the city of Waycross before we lose them, people. I'm telling you, get behind them, support them, get into these programs, whatever you all can do with them. I'm not going anywhere. I'll be right here doing some things with them because I see some things that need to be done. To my constituents, I greatly appreciate what you all have done and stuck behind me this last time, even though we fell short, that's fine. But overall, I had a good ride. I appreciate the whole body here, the Commissioners for support. I mean, the late night phone calls, Ms. Marion, Henry, the mayor, and Ms. Diane. I appreciate all of that. I know we didn't always agree, but we came to a point where we can get a solution about something. And I want to say this one last thing. When you don't agree in here about something that you want to do and it goes the other way, let's not take it personal. Because somewhere in between this body, it was sort of a different way that they can do something better. Let's not take this job personal going into anything. When you walk out the door, you're still friends, you're still Commissioners, and you're still a body of the city of Waycross. And you represent the city of Waycross. And I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Solomon Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have an hour-long speech like Mr. Threed.
You know what?
But I do want to say that I have enjoyed most of my seventeen years here with the city. And I'm excited about leaving, not because it was a hard job. It was a hard job sometimes, but because I do want to have a little bit extra freedom to go when I want to go. Everything I do is geared around whether or not I have commission meeting. I mean, that's just the way it is. That's been my life for seventeen years. And if I want to go to Timbuktu and stay three weeks, I don't have to worry about coming back in the meantime to attend a commission meeting. So, I'm just so thankful that God has allowed me to serve for this long and it's truly, truly been my pleasure. And like Commissioner Threed was saying, sometimes, man, we get in here, especially at work session, and sometimes it's a total knockdown drag out, you know? And then after we leave, after that happens, sometimes we leave here and go to a restaurant somewhere and get some milk and cookies, you know, and have a meal together, you know what I'm saying? And then with John, he'll tell you, a lot of times, ooh. I call him after meeting and wear him out. Seriously, wear him out. He's, okay, okay, I understand, I understand, I understand, I hate what you're saying, but... So, we've had some knockdown drag out. And I consider him one of my best friends, same thing with Diane. I consider her one of my best friends. But when we fall out, we have to come back together because that's what it's gonna take to keep this city going. That's what it's gonna take. If I'm mad with him or I'm mad with her, I'm not gonna vote against what she wants just because I'm mad with her. You have to look at what's best for the city overall. And that's what you do. That's the way you vote. You can have all the discussion in the world, all the discussions in the world, but at some point, we still have to come there. You still have to come, I'm gonna say we, because I'm out of this as of a few minutes. You have to come together. But I do appreciate all the department heads and your staff. And when there are issues, which y'all allow me to come and talk to your staff when they have concerns. Yeah, you do that sometimes, too. You do that sometimes, too. If they have concerns about the decision we've made, go and talk to them and let them tell you what their concerns are. Sometimes you can fix it and sometimes you can't. But I appreciate the department heads and I appreciate your staff and all the hard work that you all do. And, Mr. Mayor, you as well. I want to thank my family. I have two of my babies here with me, I had three last night, now I'm down to two now. My Ben and Ariana, she's going to sleep, we bored her to sleep. But I want to thank my mom and my brothers and my sisters and everyone who's supported me these seventeen years. And last but not least, I want to thank my sisters of D S T, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, is in the house. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. And one of my very, very best friends, Karen Etheridge, thank you so much for your support. And anything I decide to do, Karen, she's always right there, she always has been and she probably always will be. I want to say that, remind everyone that our children are out of school. We had a child who was hit by a vehicle yesterday, wasn't she? It was not in a residential neighborhood, it was in a business district. But please, 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 watch out for these children, they're out of school. And y'all know Christmas Day and the whole week after Christmas, they come out there playing with those bicycles and those new toys. Watch out for the children. Watch out for the children. And I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to you. And it has totally been my pleasure to serve the city of Waycross. Thank you. Oh, my baby just fell. Oh, my goodness. Get her, Auntie KK. Kim has it, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we will hear from Commissioner Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a privilege to get to know, I call her my other sister. And I'm gonna miss her a lot. But we still have those late night talks and let her listen to Marvin Snore over there while I'm on the phone. And we have had our ups and downs and like a yo-yo, up and down, up and down. But we always come together and we see things sometimes together and sometimes we didn't. we didn't. But like Mr. Threet said, you can always work those things out, because we all don't think alike, and so what's the best for the city is what we need to do. And, um, Mr. Threet, it's been nice to have you on board. You brought a lot to the table, uh, being previous law enforcement, you was experienced at that, and, um, brought a lot to the chief of ideas that I think was great. So, um, it's been a pleasure serving with you as well. And, um, I've been here a little longer, not much longer than Marion, but it's been a much, a very, uh, pleasure for all these years to serve with her. I felt just like she was my other sister. I have four sisters, and Marion's my fifth one, so I, I thank her for her friendship and for serving the city, and she's done a very good job for serving the city. And I'd like to thank all of our guests tonight for coming. That was nice for y'all to come out and honor Marion and, uh, honored your nephew, Mr. Threet. And I'd like to thank our staff, they do work hard. Our department heads, this city will roll right on because they are such good department heads. Every department that we have, I feel just confident in them, that they don't miss a beat, even without a, even without a city manager. Every one of them just carries forth, just like there's somebody sitting in that seat. And I appreciate all y'all's hard work, every one of you. And y'all wear a lot of hats, that's not really in your job description, but I appreciate everything y'all do. And I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe and prosperous New Year. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hopkins. At this time, our Mayor pro tem, Commissioner Henry Strickland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to say, thank you to Commissioner Threet. When I first met John in this room, we both, we both kind of was measuring each other up to actually find out who we are. And that's what you do in this room. You observe and you learn, you watch and you listen, and you find each other's strengths and you build upon them, because that's where the golf is made, made up, is in those strengths. And the love for the city was obvious there. With Commissioner Threet, it was never an issue of this or that, it was either, is it right or is it wrong? And if it's right, that's the way John Threet would move. It's right. And for that, and the integrity and the things that you've taught me while I've sat in this seat, I greatly appreciate it. And I thank you for your friendship. Ms. Marion?
I love you too.
She's always given me a hard time, but it's that hard time that she's given me, that gave me the ability to learn and to learn her strength. Her strength in this room is when it came to these children of this community, no matter what the issue, it was always, what is best for these children in this community? She never wavered on that. What we do for one, we must do for all. And learn the Charter. The Charter is our guide, the Charter is our instruction. You cannot deviate from it. What it says is the way we conduct ourself in this room and the way we conduct ourself in the public. So, I have greatly, I have greatly appreciated serving with you two for almost two years now, and I thank you, and I look forward to continuing our relationship and friendship beyond this room. So, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you all for coming tonight. God bless, Merry Christmas, and have a good New Year. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This has been a great day, and I will say that, first, I want to thank Commissioner Strickland for stepping in today for me. He had to be Mayor pro tem, which is real good. Most times, I've already been told by the other Mayor pro tems that they knew that they would never get an opportunity to do much because they knew I would be here. Well, today was one of those days. I was on the highway, and you got a chance to do just what you've been called to do. I'm especially thankful to each of you for being here tonight. Thank you for support. We do need that support in more ways than one. And most especially, we thank Commissioner Solomon Gaines, who's like a mama bear sometimes. She knows just what she has to say and how to do a thing and get things done. I've never had these confrontations I'm hearing about each person has had with her. I've never had that, thankfully.
I'll teach you differently.
I, 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 I found that out. I thank you. I thank you so much. So, I, I, I hold my gavel, because most times in this room, I'm the person that she refers to as the person, he will tell us off, he will sit us down. And I, sometimes I hear people talking, but they don't realize, we go by the code and by the Charter. I let them talk and say whatever they want to say. But the reality is, at the end of the day, we go by what we know is right, and I appreciate the enforcement that Commissioner Solomon Gaines has given with regard to the Charter. When she, she's the only person I know walks around and had the Charter in her bag. I'm not talking about on the computer, I'm talking about the actual code. And we go back and forth concerning that code and discussing it. And sometimes, that's just good for the people who are a part of this organization, a part of this city, to look at your code. It's online, actually, you can read it for yourselves, and it's on MUNICODE, Waycross, Georgia. And you can look at every portion, part, and piece of that code to see how we have put the puzzle together to become the people we are. And then Commissioner Threet, you know, he's a quiet person to me, I don't hardly hear him say a whole lot of anything, but I see him working. And sometimes, when I was in school, Ms. Hermina Smith told us when I was in sixth grade, she said, "Big talkers are little doers." What she meant by that, and it had a little owl on the wall that had that on there, and I remember this in sixth grade, looking up at that wall and reminding myself not to say anything and to ask to say something. I would raise my hand, and then I would respond. But I think about, you know, Scripture says that, "He that keeps his mouth, keeps his life. He that opens wide his mouth shall have destruction." Sometimes, we open our mouths up and we step ourselves into a cave that we create of our own doing. And I appreciate watching this man walk through, get things done, and never talk his way down but into new things. One thing I noticed, when these three Commissioners got together and worked on that path, they got it, and it was done. That's a great effort. You cannot do this by yourself. And in this room, I don't care what the Mayor wants to do, if I can't get three votes, if we can't count to three, it will not be. So, we know that's just how that works in, in any capacity. If you don't go with the quorum and the people are not present, you can't get anything done. I am appreciative also to Commissioner Hopkins. I tell you what, she, if she's not motioning, she is seconding. And between the two ladies down there, I'll tell you the truth, sometimes my brothers, they sit on the side and they just wait. They say, "They got it, they got it." They go, they let them steer. And I, I watch that, it's, it makes me smile to think about, at the end of the day, that we have people who work together as a team, and that teamwork makes the dream work. Looking at this city manager that's active now, I have gotten calls, checks, I'm reminded of things all the time. I really appreciate you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate what you've done thus far, and we know that within these next few months, we got a work to do, but it's gonna get done. And, and while I'm talking about Chiefs, I, I must say something to Chief Cox. Chief Cox, I do thank you again. You know what I'm talking about? Last night, I got out of here, and when I went to the, the store, I got some fuel, I filled up. All I needed, I couldn't believe it, all I needed was a little money and a little gas, and I did it. But when I got ready to crank up, my car wouldn't crank, I went inside, and there was two officers, one officer and there was, I think it was Officer Griffin, he was in there, standing there talking, you know, on his way out. I said, "Listen, I can't crank my vehicle, I need you to help me." He said, "I don't think my box works," but he called someone. And they all came up at the same time and cranked my vehicle. Now, to me, that says a whole lot. I didn't have to call too many people, I didn't have to call AAA, but I did have some help, and there was a triple threat. I didn't have anybody worried about anything, it took care of it, and I really appreciate that. And the way our city is looking, I know we have so much water on the road. How many of you have been noticing that? Be mindful, be careful, but I also notice that roads are being done and being repaired, and we are appreciative for the work that these Commissioners have done in times past to make sure these things were set up. To our city attorney, thank you, wise counselor, I can just ask a question? I'd like, tonight, I did it. Have y'all paid attention to what I do? I ask questions. Do we need a consensus? Because sometimes, we'll have an event that takes place up here that we have not had before, and we have to go to someone who knows how to answer the question, and he knows the answer. And the other part is, if he doesn't know, guess what he'll do? I can't say that, give you a definitive answer right now, but let me do some research, and I'll come back with the answer. I appreciate that. And our star, well, should I say she's a star? Ms. China, we really appreciate the hard work you've been doing. She's been serving in dual roles, wearing many hats. That's an interesting comment. But she does a great job, and we appreciate all that she does, from city manager, working with the city manager, working as a city clerk, I had to read your sign, and also finance director, all in one. That's a lot of work. This city is much better now, and I know when I first came in, people were questioning some things, but I'm looking and thankful, because we are able to do some things we could not have done if we didn't have proper people in place, and thank you so very much for being in place. To each of you who are here, to our new Commissioners who are getting ready to step up and step into these positions, wow, congratulations, and get ready, we got a work to do to keep this place going and being what it's supposed to be. Ah, tonight, are we there tonight? Are we going there tonight? Very good. After we leave here, I believe we're going to the City Auditorium, and we're going to have a good time. All I can tell you is, just be prepared for the good time. We don't know how that's gonna end. But I met, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Threet, I think I met your uncle before. I think I met him at the GMA meeting not too long ago and took a picture with him and sent it back to you to let you know that I had just met somebody that I know that knows you. And this is a good thing, thankful for you being here, and thank you for the safe ride over. I know sometimes these trips with rain going down like that, these roads are not always fun, are they? But the speed, I had to slow down myself today. I was doing my normal, getting back here, and I appreciate you stepping in for me. With that being said, thank you, staff, members, and all personnel, to our new HR director and to all of you. Have a Merry Christmas, Mr. President, and have a Happy New Year. God bless you. I entertain a motion for adjournment?
Slow move, Mr. Mayor.
Is that it, Mr. Mayor?
Is motion and seconded. We are getting ready to go to the City Auditorium. Have a great day.
That's cute, baby. That's a...